Welcome to the June 19th work session of the Board of Education. I would like to make an amendment, have someone make an amendment on the agenda before we start.
I'd like to make a motion that we delete 3.02, the passing of the Queenence County School Board, School Board Handbook.
Second, and we'll explain why. Okay, we have a motion second. For discussion, we, I read in the handbook that that has to be approved in an open session. So we'll still talk about it under presentations.
Yeah, open.
I'm sorry, a business meeting. So it has to happen in July.
Oh, any changes we still suggest are still available to go forward with?
We're going to talk about that under presentations, right?
Okay.
But we're just not going to do the actual action item of approval.
Okay.
Any other questions on that motion? So, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The move.
Second.
Motion is second, approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. First things capital budget.
Yes, thank you Captain Kelly. Before I start, I just would like to acknowledge the fact that all my exec team is not here. Today is the first day of our, or it's our Leadership Institute for June. So, all of our exec team members are there, or at least Mr. Paluski is there. Mr. Farley is attending to some human resources business right now. But we do have a presentation for you on the capital budget. Of course, the commissioners approved the capital budget. We are not at liberty to make adjustments to that. We're here to share with you the impact of some of the cuts that were paid and our plan for moving forward. Okay? Mr. Pfister?
So, before you is the, in your board docs is your CIP, Capital Improvement. And we put some impact of some of the funding reductions below that. But just walking through the document, the first column is the requested funding between, with the state and the county. So the state was $673,000, requested from the county was $6.9 million. What was finally approved, there was a small adjustment to the state funding down to $656,000. And the county funding went down, down to 4.9. So it was a reduction of about $2,660,000 from the county. Very similar schedule to what's in your budget document with the major construction, the systemics, the facility assessment related, we just kind of collapsed that from all of those individual ones into just one comprehensive building assessment line, safety and security, vehicle replacement, technology, and then some of the miscellaneous. As you can see, other than textbooks, everything in the miscellaneous area was not funded. So, the impact of the funding reductions, I could certainly go through them, but Mr. Pender and Ms. Bowlen are here as well. $500,000 reduction in comprehensive building assessment will require delays in many of the routine projects. The $500,000 reduction in miscellaneous will require delays to some very old equipment at some of the schools, including PA and intercom systems. The bus replacement, $100,000, we were under the impression that that was going to be corrected. But that $100,000 cut remained. We'll have to do or request some adjustments there because we do have four buses that need to be replaced because of the mandate of 15 years of service.
What do you mean, some adjustment?
I'm sorry?
What does that mean? What's your adjustment idea?
So, the four, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had seven or eight buses that were going to go out at the same time that would meet the 15-year lifespan. So instead of asking the county for, hey, I need eight buses this year, we took four off last year, three or four off last year, and then we were taking four this year to spread it out kind of evenly over the years. And they didn't fund $100,000 for that. But I can take the amount of money for the vehicle replacement, if you saw there for maintenance, and just defer that for another year and use that 115. I mean, I need a bus. I can't, you know, operate because they're out of commission July 1st. So, you know, we can defer some of the transportation, or not transportation, the maintenance equipment that's, you know, from 1994 and 1990 and for another year, so.
The maintenance, what is, what is, maintenance?
Trucks, vans, yep, just the stuff that the guys, yep, are traveling in. I mean, we've been, for the past several years, like again, trying to spread it out so that we're not asking for it all at once, just giving them steady, the commissioners steady numbers as they request it, just like the facility assessment piece that we requested at 1.4. So that, you know, each year in advance, that's what we're coming for. So there's no surprises for that.
Do we do like two and five years out, major things coming up so we can, or that's something?
So, we did a facility assessment about three years ago that really has given us the information that we need for the next 20 years. And it is, spells out everything from, you know, the interior, the exterior, and with the cost associated with it, it's all on a computer program. We've shared that, we can share it with everybody in here. We've shared it with the county commissioners and the county executive. But it really spells out, before we didn't have anything, I mean, we're just kind of like, all right, we think this might go down this year. And some things like that still might happen. But the commissioners kept telling us and the county executive, Tom Grekka, kept saying, hey, we need something that is standard for years. So about 1.4 million will kind of handle those needs every year. Now, don't get confused with, when we say capital, you still have the capital part that's approved by the state, all right? And that's funding. But this part here where you see the facility assessment, those are like, you know, the painting of the buildings. Some of them, like, we're fortunate enough this year to paint Sellersville Elementary and Graysonville Elementary. It's been 21, 22 years since they've been able to be painted. We want to get them back on a cycle of every seven to 10 years. And then you can also take what we fix, it goes back into the database, and then it repopulates, and then, you know, hey, we crossed that off so we have a track of actually what's occurring and what's going on with that.
So these three maintenance vehicles, are these things we've already approved, like the box truck? Or are these three that we haven't seen yet?
These are, yes ma'am, they're the three you haven't seen yet, and we won't get to see them this year.
So I see here is this $350,000 reduction to technology plan is now going to have to come out of the operating budget? Is that what I'm reading this correctly?
So, yes.
How are we going to?
And so that is just a, something that we would propose that we would have to do because if something went down and it's not in the capital, we have no choice. We have no other source for it.
It would not affect the 20 budget.
FY '20.
20 budget. What we're saying is because of this reduction, we're going to have to put off the things. And then if we don't, in the future, get $1.4 million for the five-year technology plan as a minimum.
Right.
Then some of those things that are falling off the technology plan will have to come into future operating budget requests.
Where would we, where would we be pulling it from then?
It would, it would go in as a new request. It wouldn't be necessarily pulling it from somewhere.
And so, you know, each year we have different requests, so we prioritize. We just have to prioritize what we decided to purchase.
Technology, tannamount right now.
It is.
Well, I was going to say, so all of those technology requests we had last meeting, they're covered?
Correct.
Yes.
Under the capital budget?
Correct.
Okay.
So when we vote yes to that, we already had that plan?
Right. So recall that we get, did a presentation for you a couple of months ago about the technology plan. So we went six years out. And you saw that we had a plan for when we would purchase different devices, when we would improve infrastructure and those kinds of things. So what we'd have to do, and remember, is not just a one time. So once we purchase laptops, we spread that payment out over several years. So we get locked in.
Right.
To, as we go in the out years, we're okay for this year. But as we go in the out years, we get locked in. So some decisions have to be made about the types of devices that we buy. So it may be a lesser quality device, and we know what happened, you know, the first time. We had all kinds of, you know, issues with that. So we try to steer away from that. But if funds are reduced, we do have to reconsider some of the programs that we said we were going to offer, the quality of the devices.
The first three years of those first ones that we bought, there was so many problems.
Yes. We switched to a whole different manufacturer to get away from our, one manufacturer.
To get away from that.
Yeah, and then we added the additional insurance for the accidental and vandalism.
Exactly.
Because, you know, we were, first year.
That was 2015. That was, I mean.
What's your protective case?
Yeah, we added a protective, cover one of them. I mean, we still going to get vandalism, that's, that's just going to be part of the deal, that's always going to be part of the deal.
Well, there's 6,000 students.
Right, exactly.
Using it.
Yeah, going back and forth from home. So we tried to add an extra protection this year and add the insurance for the fifth rate, if you guys prove.
And we're paying for the insurance even for those families that cannot?
Correct.
Okay.
And just as important, all those upgrades that Mr. Pfister felt that we needed for our internal system, they're covered because they were in our plan.
If it was in the plan for FY '20, it is covered.
Okay.
And hopefully, we don't need an upgrade like that again for a couple of years. So, down the road, that may have to be built in again.
Well, we do have different parts of it spread out.
To still do, I get that.
Yeah, we do.
But this was, it just barely catches up to where our system needed to be.
So do you want to speak to what some of the most impactful parts are?
Right.
Right, this year.
I have one question. Did we explain to the commissioners longevity or life expectancy of what things are so when we do something, they understand it, the ones that need to understand it?
Yes, sir. We even meet with the county executive, Jonathan Siemens, prior and go, hey, this is what we are going to be coming to ask you for this. So that, yes. And then we've also shared it with the county commissioners of the facilities assessment.
We take a number and we spread it out over three or four years. They understand, you know, it's a million dollar cost this year, but we might be able to do it for 333,000 as a three-year commitment. And they understand that because, you know, we knocked that off and they'll have the cost this year, but it's a reoccurring cost for at least three-year commitment.
We do explain that to them, whether it.
In documentation up where in three years somebody doesn't forget.
Yes. And when we, as far as like the facility parts and all that, the technology is a little bit different in my area, but the facilities, yes.
And they should know that because they have the same issues problem.
Yes.
Correct.
Matter of fact, they were looking at doing the facility assessment like we did, just for theirs. I mean, it's, the state, the state's school construction program is going to mandate every school system have that done. So we're already kind of ahead of the ballgame, and it's one of the best things we've ever done. Because before, we were just kind of grabbing, so.
The multi-year technology plan was their recommendation years back. They wanted a multi-year plan. And we felt like that was going to be an opportunity that could be funded correctly every year.
Right, well, that's great if they remember.
But I was surprised, yeah.
Not that, you know, you get different administrations and different people and different, it's political, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, why are you doing this? Well, you know, we committed to this two years ago.
Correct.
This is a commitment we have, and the decision we made, right or wrong, we're going to have to live by it until we do something else.
Well, in 2015, two or three of the county commissioners that are sitting now were there at that meeting, in this room.
President.
So they all, yeah, they were all part and parcel to it. What I would like to know is this million 81, where, do we have fund balance enough to be able to cover that? Not even. Or can we at least get those two refrigerated walk-ins taken care of? Do we have that in the fund bound?
The 1966.
1966, I mean, my God, can we just get rid of it?
Can't take a dump that costs money.
No.
Recycling fees are down too.
Apparently.
You want to speak to that?
We've discussed, there's a line item under equipment and 21st century furniture that was approved, and we've discussed utilizing that for the walk-in.
Okay.
It's about a $75,000 cost.
Considering it was in, you know, four decades ago.
Yeah, they, when they renovated that school, that walk-in was never touched. It's still from 1966.
But the $75,000 to cover 230, 260, right?
There were other walk-ins that were included and not. The ones that we're speaking of are Queenence County High School specifically.
Yeah.
And it's just for those that are the 1960 units. There are others that we're trying to plan and give some forethought to so that, again, we can give the commissioners some idea that in two years, we'll be replacing the school, in three years, we'd like to replace that school. But because that line item wasn't funded, we believe that we can find the funds elsewhere to do Queenence County.
Well, it speaks to, it's a well-loved walk-in and it's still going after 40 years, so.
Jim O'Donnell loves it.
Yeah. Dogs of refrigerators, well-loved after 15 years.
My goodness. The bus camera, I have a question on bus, what does that do?
That was going to enable, some of, we've had some issues with, you know, cars stopping in front of buses or, so we were trying to put a camera on the front of the bus that actually captures what's going on in front. You know, hey, we can do without that for, I mean, another year if it's push comes to shove. I mean, I will say, as far as our area, I think priority is the walk-in refrigerator. And then, you know, when you start getting the life safety of the intercom systems, I mean, those, you know, you're buying parts on eBay to fix them because they're no longer manufacturing those parts after 20, you know, years. So if something were to happen in a school and you don't have that kind of communication, that does scare me, so.
And here's a question, why are we doing track resurfacing when they're redoing?
I was going to ask about that.
It should have been taken out of there.
Okay.
That's why it wasn't funded, because it's in the turf field plan.
That's part of their money.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So.
You're correct.
Textbooks. How does this impact our textbook plan if we're not getting our yearly stipend of $60,000?
No, that's 600,000.
I'm sorry, 600.
And they took 100,000 off, so we have to, we put our textbooks at a rotation. As you know, we started that last year, and we have social studies books that are coming forward. We haven't replaced them at elementary.
Twenty years.
Exactly, 20 years. So it does, just back up. Less money means.
AP books we just approved.
And, and the good thing though about AP books is that there are not as many. So when you do an elementary adoption, you've got several thousand, right, students that are involved. But for an AP adoption, it may be for a, this course and that course, just like we have.
So we're going to be able to fund our textbook plan.
For this year, for this year, yes, we'll be able to do. And what we can't do, we will just back up, we'll change the order on the rotation.
Is there any discussion about this textbook line item, because it's come up before, that we are not supposed to have that in our capital budget? It's clear in the education law that textbooks shouldn't be in the capital budget. But my understanding is it's their decision to do something about this error. Where are we?
They have to agree to do that. And that would mean more money in operating.
I get all that.
Right.
Have they even broached the subject?
Well, we, we brought it up.
I know we did.
Mm-hmm. But it has not come forward as something that they, you know, have been able to move forward with.
We are clearly in arrears here.
Well, that's why they pay with the one.
It's a one-time item. Textbooks are not. Now granted, you may have textbooks every year, but it's pretty clear, that's an item that should not sit in an operating, in a capital budget.
They're the ones that put it there.
That's an operating expense.
Correct.
They did for a specific reason, for one time, and years later, it's still there.
Keeps it out of MOE.
And that's they wanted it out of MOE, and that was the whole purpose behind that. That was 2013 or 14 when they did that.
And it was again supposed to be a one-time thing, and it's never been corrected.
Well, we know.
I just wanted to bring it up again.
You know, as long as they're reasonably doing it, then we've just got to find out if you're satisfied with 500,000 or 600, you know.
I think, we don't have a choice here. So we have to make do with what we have, and it means we have to rearrange our order. If something gets put off to the next year, then that's just the way we have to work it.
So the roof replacements will be done, the fire alarm system will be done?
Yes, those are all state CIP.
That was those things you brought to us last week.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying it out loud so we all understand the safety and security needs of our school system are taken care of, security cameras.
Well, that's why I still kind of worry about some of these phone systems and stuff like that down here.
I agree.
Because that could impact the same issue.
Exactly, you are very right.
And just for the sake of, because we need to make sure our public has some confidence in, you know, what's happening in our schools, in the event that a PA system does go down, which is awful. But we do have walkies that we use. So it's not as if, you know, somebody had to be a runner and runner up and down the hallways in the event of an emergency. So there are ways to communicate.
We'll also be able, we'll have the alert system.
Right.
Where they'll be able to communicate on the screen, and I talked about last time, where it pops up and you can communicate. It's just trying to have multiple layers of, you know, if their cell phones are going to be jammed, so those different areas.
That's why I'm a little concerned.
These systems are not connected, they're independent of each other. If one goes down, one will still operate.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
But how do they tie into the fire alarm system and everything else that we're upgrading if we're leaving these old systems in place?
Well, if the fire alarm system is, it's a standalone. I mean, it has its own bells and whistles, and then the PA strictly.
And the 911 system won't be impacted?
No, 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 no.
Just communications in the schoolyard, secondary way to communicate.
That's correct, yes, sir.
The state funding that was reduced on the fire alarm replacement, how's that impacting that project?
It was only $16,000, so we feel pretty confident that we can make that work. What the state has told us is that if more available funding does not come through for this year 2020, which they're still working on, luckily, it's only a $16,000 deficit for us. Some counties are looking at huge deficits. They will make that the first priority with funding then next year. So that would be our priority number one if we aren't able to make it happen. I think, given the, we've been doing a fire alarm system now each year, and given the pricing that we're getting, we've looked at bid prices versus cooperative purchasing, and there are different ways to be able to make those come in under budget. So right now, I don't have any fear that we're not going to be able to do that fire alarm system.
I'm just wondering, where'd they come up with 16,452?
No, it's just that.
Out of the blue.
I think it's just, it's a formula that they use based on our state funding formula, the 51, 49% split.
Okay.
And then what the available funding is, and then they also look at our enrollment numbers. They look at how much has already been allotted to us for the CIP based on other counties.
So we're lucky.
We are pretty lucky with, there are some counties that are planning on full projects that will not be.
Yep, okay. Aren't some of these fire alarms listed, aren't we, with some of the grants that have been popping in for safety and security?
Not for the fire alarms. Each, we've been requesting for the past several years for CIP of replacing those generators, those types of things. So this is like the second, third year, I believe, third year.
Oh, okay.
On these renovations, these things we're doing for the schools, for central offices, central middle?
Yes.
As that comes in, do you all see it in case you need to send them down a little different path? Or are they just doing something in hand and saying, here's what it is?
No, it'll be a cooperative effort and something that we continue to work with our consultants on. What we plan for the Board of Education building, there are a couple of variables here, but what we're thinking is that we want to look at three different options, and that's what we've planned. One is a comprehensive renovation to this building, but that includes moving staff off-site and there would be associated costs there. The second option would look at replacement buildings potentially on this site. Third option would be replacement building at a site yet to be determined. And what we'll be doing is, as we go through this process, working closely with the county commissioners, and hopefully, hopefully getting that feedback and maybe more direction as to which way they would like to see us go. And that may eliminate some of the things that we need to study as well. The wild card with this building is what happens with our alternative program and what the plans are for that. If there is a community use piece, if there is an alternative program piece to this building, then we have to, we have to do the feasibility study to get any type of state funding.
Is that, was a price tag, what, was a million dollars for the feasibility?
No, it was a $200,000 cost of feasibility.
Oh, okay.
That would include educational specifications if we do indeed include our alternative program or another community use piece that maybe would utilize state after hours.
You know what I'm confusing it with, the architecture?
Yeah.
That was so much money when we did Stevensville Little School.
Five percent or more.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to about 10 now.
Is it really?
When we do this, or is this a committee, or is this just our doing this, or?
We are definitely going to bring in a committee. What they'll be looking at is lots of different environmental factors. They'll be looking at space standards that they'll develop for this building. They'll be pulling in a team of members from the building to get input so that we can develop a scope of what the actual needs are. Again, more of those wild card variables are, right now, we have a cafe here that serves students. If we're on this site, we probably still need to include that. If we're off-site, that may not be necessary, especially if we're closer to one of the other schools. We think about gymnasium space, they currently don't have that here. That would be something that would be very advantageous to that program. So again, there are some different factors that they're going to be looking at depending on which location we're looking at too.
This is just, me as one person speaking, we need to watch alumni association because politically that's going to be an issue because this school, 1966, there's still a lot of them alive.
Yes, and we know that.
And you know, some other.
What did you say? I didn't hear what you meant.
Alumni Association. And we did, we had Sellersville.
Yeah.
And Churchill. I mean, we had two commissioners fighting on what was from the bulldoze between Centerville and Churchill when they took the school away.
We're going to have that here too.
It gets to be a political ring. And Centerville, since it stopped in 1966 here, there's too many of them still around. Not, actually, I'm saying this wrong.
No, no, you're fine.
Too many incident alumni people that have this, this is where I went to school, we're not there.
This is an historical building.
Right to that. So I mean, when we do this, it's, it's just, at the last minute, and then you get the commissioners in on it, and they're political, so it's going to be.
We totally anticipated it for both studies. For the study for this building and the study for Centerville Middle School, then it needs to incorporate a huge community piece because these are staples in the community, and there will be a lot of input, there's going to be a lot of feedback, and we want to hear that. We want to encourage the community in this.
That's the way it's to work, but I mean, it's just something that's going to come up by now.
Absolutely. Just as a suggestion though, there's that whole field over there, we could build a new Centerville Middle School, move this building and the Arise Academy over to the current Centerville Middle. They'd have a gym, they'd have a café, it would service the students for Arise. It would be a win-win situation. And again, this building could actually be turned over to the Historical Society and kept, and, you know, done for tours and educational pieces. I mean, there's so many things that could be done here.
It goes back to the one good thing, remember from Sellersville, the old Sellersville, it goes to the county commissioner.
Yes, I agree with that.
So they make a decision on what to do with it.
But it's, it's a, it's a big liability for somebody to take this building. I mean, it's something.
Well, that's what happened with Sellersville Middle School.
Well, yeah. And it's, it's a high school. But it's, it's a liability, and that's just something that I, you know, when we go down the path, if something's gonna.
Yeah, certainly something.
Even traffic through Centerville, I mean, we were all on the other side. It'd be awful nice to have, I mean, I always liked this to be the county commissioner's office. We moved to the Centerville Elementary with the Turner School and then build a new school out on the other town, but.
Right. That would be perfect.
Well, yeah, but they didn't want to do it because the commissioners wanted the new building. They wanted Liberty Building. They didn't want, you know, it's, you know. But we think it's perfect and what, you know, somebody might think it's reasonable, and then you wouldn't have traffic through Centerville, but it is, you know.
Well, there was still the same token that they could've put us in the new building out on Vincent Street or somewhere else, but they, they didn't have any interest in doing that.
No.
But then they complained about the upkeep and the cost of this building.
As we all do.
Okay, thank you.
But they have, and in support of them, they have mentioned in a couple of meetings.
They have, and we've talked about.
We understand, we need, we need a new building for the Board of Eds. I mean, they do understand.
And this is an outdated building. I mean, this is an invasion.
Oh, this is ridiculous. People working.
Everybody concurs on that point.
Exactly right.
So, right now, this is all we're doing with this?
Do we have more questions? Any more questions on this budget, on this capital? So, I need a motion to approve.
Well, that's under Action Item.
I'm sorry. Never mind. Everybody has that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. So, turf fields.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Pender is going to display the three contract or MOUs on, on the screen, but you also have them there in your documents as well. And so, we can go about this, we weren't exactly sure how you wanted to handle it, but we can go about this a few different ways. Mr. Pender has an original MOU from Parks and Rec for grounds. He has our updated MOU for grounds, and he also has the turf fields MOU. We weren't sure if you wanted to go over the grounds one at all. We can handle it however you want. We can go through it. We have certain parts highlighted that we think are of significance to you, and, or you can simply ask your questions. So, we can go with it however you, however you choose.
In, in the interest of time, I mean, we don't have to go over the grounds maintenance agreement. That's been in place forever, correct?
Well, we updated it, made some improvements.
Well, and there you go. I hear what he has to say on that.
Okay.
All right, so, just kind of to go through this, basically, back in two thousand and three, to the best of my knowledge, we had grounds crews that were Queenence County Public School employees. Then Parks and Rec took over it. They redid the MOU in two thousand and nine, and it's been the same basically ever since. Some items that I wanted to point out to you, and you can see where we were at and where we've headed to. The number two up there, and I, I just highlighted some ones in yellow, that one up there says basically that they will control all capital projects. Money goes into their account, they control it. We've taken that one out where, and you'll see in the new one where, hey, it's under our authority and we are the ones that are going to say, hey, yea or nay, I'm working with that. Could you go to the next one? Sorry. There you go.
I can't see it, so I can't.
I apologize.
Better know. You want the next highlight?
Yeah, you go to the next highlight, Dr. King, please. So, all right, we're kind of tying these three into here. They wanted to have in this MOU also the artificial turf field usage. I wanted to keep them separate simply because the MOU for the turf fields ties into the project open space funding. Totally different source of funding, and it's also a twenty-year agreement to get that funding from the state. So, I highlighted some areas on here. What they originally brought, and when I say they, Parks and Rec, I've worked closely with them about this, they were saying, hey, basically from Monday to Friday, you can have the, the turf field tracked from seven AM to six PM. Well, that's, that's really not gonna work for us because we still have athletic events going on late into the night. Would you go to the next page, Doctor? Basically, this was it. This was the whole entire MOU, like a page and a half if that. And then they would have exclusive use on the fields Saturday, Sunday, and then also throughout the whole entire summer. Now, keep in mind, this is a community, you know, project that we're going through. So, you know, we are working with Parks and Rec, community groups out there. So, I came back, I went through, and I found some different MOUs from Howard County, Montgomery County, Anne Arundel, and then Worcester had a fairly decent one. And I pulled pieces from all of them to create the two MOUs that we're gonna, we have up there now. And then also, I heard concerns from the band at Ken Island High School and then the band at Queenence High School, Mr. Wright. So, do you want to go to the turf one, or do you want to go to the one for the common grounds and review it? We can do either way.
So, the common grounds is?
Common grounds, what I said.
The one that we've had for years.
We've had that for years. And all I did, if you just want to click on that, Dr. King.
But you changed, basically, most of the other.
I'm sorry, do you want to go to the question?
Yes, go to the, the one that says grounds.
Of grounds.
Yes, ma'am. So, what I did, I, I went through there and really listed out what the schools we have. They didn't have all the schools included in the older one. I went through, and what I've noticed over the past five years, there's not really, in the original one laid out, hey, we're gonna do this on this date, we're gonna cut the grass on these dates, we're going to, nothing spells out who's responsible for anything. And so, we went through and we said, hey, you know, when it comes to, say, parking lots, it would be like, well, that's not ours, that's yours. Well, where is it in the MOU? So, going through this, we put the capital projects, if you could keep going forward. Here it lists what Parks and Recreation's responsibilities for the common grounds, and that excludes the athletic fields.
Excludes all the athletic fields, or you just?
It's in another piece. I wanted to keep them separate.
Okay.
If you keep going.
Thanks.
All right. So then it lists, you know, Queenence County Public Schools duties, responsibilities for the common grounds of just the grass, the trees. And then, keep going, please. Going through, then we start talking about the responsibility of the athletic fields, the Bermuda, the baseball, softball fields. Those are all items that, well, are you responsible for the tennis nets? Well, no, back in two thousand and six, you did it one time, why don't you do it now? All of this goes through and really lays it out. I met with Steve Shanley, I hope I'm saying his name right, the director of Parks and Rec, Mike Watson, and Robbie Blackston to review all of this. Here is one of the areas where we lacked, and I, I highlight this whole entire section because the communication and information sharing is critical to making this work. You know, each year, we give them testing schedules. Hey, don't cut the grass on these days. I mean, it's getting really, really hard. Recess times, you know, things like that that spell it out prom. Also, the athletic schedules. Here are the dates. We added on there for band directors. These are the dates they want to use the fields. You have the tournament of bands. And then also, coming back to us is the Parks and Rec, what they're responsible for communicating with us. And I, sitting down with, with those three, I think it's really ironed out a lot of the issues, so it kind of, like I said, spells it out more, and we're not gonna have the kind of hiccups that we've had before of, you know, pointing fingers back and forth of who's responsible for it. So, that's kind of the, the overall MOU that we went with that. Now, the turf MOU.
Can we touch on this just for a second?
Sure.
So, removal of ice and snow from our parking lots so that we can have schools start, have a ninety-eight minute delay rather than canceling school altogether because our parking lots are not ready. How are we gonna handle that in the future?
Parks, Parks and Rec handles the parking lots and sidewalks along with the custodians handle that.
But they don't get there till seven thirty, eight o'clock, and we want to have schools start at nine thirty, and it's not safe. That's been a historical problem.
I'll say this, a lot of times, that's sometimes not the case. A lot of it, what our problem is, is the backroads. I mean, or the county backroads. You don't salt them, you know, they're just putting the sand mixture down on them. And also, I will say this, they've had some reorganization at Parks and Rec, and, you know, we're talking the night before of, hey, what time are you guys coming out tomorrow? You know, and, and I'll say this, Robbie and his crew, they're pretty much out there at five o'clock, and what they started doing this year was pre-treating the parking lots and the sidewalks. The areas we run into are truly the backroads.
On what count?
Yep.
State highways and?
I mean, state, state's better because they're, they're plowing, they're applying, pre-treating and all that, but the backroads, you know, it's, you start getting up around the fields and the wind drifting, and this, this year was, was very strange because it was predominantly up around Sudersville, Crumpin area that we had snow, and down south it wasn't as, as much. Past couple of years, once it snowed, it seems like we stayed in this cold pattern, you know, below freezing, so it's not really melting as quickly, but this year was a little bit different with that. But Rob, Robbie does a pretty good job with that.
So, and I see here that we made this MOU a term of five years.
Yes. That's basically what they have been in the past, and I didn't want to tie this into the turf because then you're tying it into a twenty-year.
Well, I was only gonna say, instead of, how about making it three and then reassessing it? Or it's just, there's a language in here that reassesses?
Yes. We can, and you'll see that in the turf because we know that there's gonna be changes. We can put a denims to it and change it. Meet, there's also a quarterly schedule of when we're gonna meet about different things so that we can say, hey, this isn't going too well. You know, like next week, we have a meeting with the ADs and Robbie about the turf fields to make sure we're on schedule for, when I say turf, I'm sorry, Bermuda fields, to make sure that, hey, they're up and ready to go for when school starts and we don't have what we had last year, so.
Just a question. Page six, you have tournaments, replacement of sod from fund. What, I don't know what that means.
So, when they originally installed Bermuda, part of the thinking was, when you have the tournaments, a certain portion goes to, like, the athletic boosters they're going to put in, say, like a thousand dollars would go to the athletic boosters. The other portion of that money that they make off this goes to paying Parks and Rec spraying the lines, setting up the fields, like, say, Hogan's Lacrosse. And then there is a portion of money that goes into an account to help maintain the fields, like buy equipment, you know, for the Bermuda fields. Now.
They have been doing that with the tournaments that?
They have, yes. Now, they're not, they're not, it started out years ago, you would have probably two or three tournaments at each school, but what's happened is that there's no way, I wouldn't say no way, it's hard for those fields to recover by the time school starts. So, like, this year, we only have one tournament, Hogan's Lacrosse, and it will be at Queens County High School and White Marsh. It just, the goal areas will never recover, the field hockey areas never recover. So, the funding for that is not as large as it used to be, and you'll see kind of on the turf side of it or printing that out, splitting that fifty-fifty and putting that money to help catch up on that part.
Yeah, I have questions about that when we get there, but, so I just wondered about.
Like, would Hogan's, do you people come over here to?
They turn in something to Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec goes through and looks at it, descends to us, we review it, look at it and go, hey, you know, that's fine, or we need to adjust this a little bit or whatever. The, I, in my mind, some of the money probably needs to increase.
Do we go around and find out what other tournaments, what other places are charging?
Yes, yes.
That we have a, a good deal of?
Now, I'll say this, the, the Hogan's Lacrosse is really spelled out of how many games you can have on the fields, the length of time on the fields, what they're responsible for, how they're to set up, how they're to run the tournament. One item we ran into a couple of years ago, it's raining outside and you want to have your tournament, well, you, you know, so now we have a monitor there that has, says, hey, nope, you know, or yes, go ahead, these fields are fine.
We can close them down if the weather doesn't permit.
Yep, yes, sir.
Do they bring their own goals and stuff? Or we provide? Because I was trying to figure that out on the turf field thing.
Whatever goals we have there, they, they use, but I'll, they bring in quite a few of them because really, to think about it, we only have two lacrosse fields at each school, and the county has increased their amount of fields they have. So now, White Marsh can accommodate a lot more than what we used to use at our schools. So, that's another reason you're kind of not seeing a larger tournament based at our schools.
They're staying in Annapolis County, too.
That's true, too.
They're going back and forth between Crofton and Bowie. A lot of them are.
Back up to, we have the sole authority to go forward on the fields based on weather, or it's a collaboration with Parks and Rec?
No, we do.
Really?
Yep.
They agreed to that?
They have to pay, actually, the tournament group has to pay for a, a field supervisor.
Good.
So.
And they require them to have bathrooms and whatever needs to be.
They bring in their porta-potties. We do not open up anything. They.
Lock that, I mean, we don't have any, they have, only the fields they have access to.
That's correct, yep. Yep, only the fields. Okay, you want to talk about turf?
Yes.
Okay.
[laughing]
All right, so, again, just to kind of go back on the, the MOU the county turned in, it didn't really spell out anything, and there were some things that I had heartburn over and concerns of scheduling and all that. So, again, like I said, I went through several other counties that have already instituted programs and pulled out different things that I thought, you know, was beneficial. I heard from both principals at the high schools, I also heard from both ADs, reached out, Mr. Wright sent an email about, you know, what his concerns were at Ken Island, and then also, forgive me, I'm forgetting the band director's name at Ken Island. Just because what was presented, I think, in a Parks and Rec advisory meeting was not correct. I mean, it was something that they were proposing, the original one, MOU. The MOU that we have now, is that up there, Dr. King? Oh, thank you. So, and I, I'm just throwing out some concerns that, that my group had. In the original MOU that was proposed, there's no language in there really that says we have any control over anything. And when I say control, I'm like saying, where is the field gonna go? You know, what are the dimensions? In the new MOU we have, it spells out the installation process, it spells out who's responsible. Again, it's still gonna be a group effort. It was scheduling, that, I highlighted that area up there. This is probably gonna be one of the most crucial pieces, and if you look up there, we have the, you know, dates for the graduation, we have the athletic schedules. All of that information, we gotta have as soon as it's ready because if we have Parks and Rec going to be using the turf fields and then third-party groups, you know, we can't have, well, you scheduled it, well, no, we didn't have it. We can't have, well, we just decided on the whim, we're gonna have this tournament. It's really gotta be spelled out and communicating between them. One of the areas we changed up there, we have priorities until seven PM in the evening on the track and the high school, and at the last line there, basically, we have the right to supersede anything. We, we know that games are not going to be over at seven, all right? Parks and Rec knows that, hey, really, in the fall and in the spring, there's not gonna be a whole lot of, of rental during the time because you figure you got JV, you got varsity, you got boys, you got girls lacrosse. It's really going to be used up. In the fall, you add on top of there the band, you know, and on Saturday. So, that's one of the areas. We put some language in there about MPSA, SSAA, fall, sports season. We put in there also about the band, what days, they, they need to use it, like Mr. Wright practices on Saturday morning. The really only day that we're kind of giving up is Sunday.
Well, I think that's what a lot of us were concerned about, whether these, you know, I mean, we've heard it said, these aren't our fields, these are Parks and Rec's fields. We wanted to make sure our organization and our teams were taken care of. What else is left over, they can have, but I want every one of our teams who need to utilize these fields to have their advantage.
Well, seven o'clock, I understand because boys lacrosse and football all start at seven.
Yeah, but if.
Weekday.
If you read, if you go back and read through it, it talks about games. So, when games and all are going on, we supersede anything that goes on.
Okay, I thought you.
And playoffs or anything like that?
And it's, playoffs are in there, I mean, it spells out everything in there of what needs to occur.
In bottom nutshell, we have priority.
Yes, sir.
They follow us.
Yep.
And if they don't, and with notice and stuff, so.
And I.
We would never be bumped from our field.
No. And I went through this with Parks and Rec with Steve and Robbie and Mike, probably for about three hours, just lawn by lawn by lawn, going through it, just making sure everybody understands. I.
So, the only thing that wasn't covered was whose custodian was gonna take care of when it was QA CPR.
And I, they, they didn't think this was a big deal, but I've been to these championships for my son's football, and when you get there and the gates are closed, it becomes a big deal. Or I have to go buy toilet paper because nobody stocked the bathrooms.
The bathroom's backed up, you're gonna take care of that.
So, it's, it's a huge deal for the parents.
I know it is.
Arriving when no one's there to open the handicap accessible entrance.
So, in the MOU, when it is a Queenence County Public School event, we're responsible for cleaning it, maintaining it. When it comes up.
And the monitor.
And the monitoring it. When it is a Parks and Rec activity or a third party, they are responsible for making sure it is clean and set up. I mean, it, it puts it in there. There's also language in there about, hey, if we have a group that's really not maintaining our facilities, there's a checklist of, hey, you've been warned, you've been through this, we're not allowing you to come rent this out anymore. So, it does spell that out. I don't foresee large tournaments at our high schools because it's one field. I see this being more of teams wanting to practice on it, like third-party teams, like a lacrosse club or a soccer club or something. I don't foresee us having, you know, a huge tournament there because, again, it's one field and, you know, you've got twenty-eight teams coming, you're not gonna be able to get them all on one field.
But even if it's a small group, we needed to clarify that, and that, I think, was our biggest concern. It wasn't clear. People might've had ideas of what it meant, it really was not clear how that was going to go from one side, school, school system to public on the other side. At what time that began and ended and.
You could have championships going on, those kinds of things, yes.
Yeah.
But it's, it's spelled out in there. I mean, it kind of got blown out there, but...
Okay. So the 10:00 AM on Saturday, is it, the band director said that's enough time for them to get out there and do what they need to do?
They supersede.
Okay.
So we have, like, I have Mr. Wright's list. He's got seven or eight dates in September and October, basically September 14th to October 26th where he needs it. So they go on the calendar.
Beyond 10:00.
Because they're on the field Saturday morning.
Yes. So they go on, yeah, so they go, say, till 2:00 in the afternoon. So that goes on there, hey, you can't use this because...
But they plan, they plan ahead and tell them ahead, right? Because they need to be able to plan for the, for the rec program that might want to use it.
So that's why, when you go back, you'll look at, I mean, like, you know, the band scheduled activities, it needs to come out July 17th for what we're going to have.
And he's got four years planned.
Yes.
I mean, he's very...
And he communicates with Jolene Gottlieb about building access and usage. So most of that we have tied into there and put into that place. But, I mean, I know they have tournament bands and you have Ken Island High School, which their band is making a comeback and becoming larger. So it's, I feel it's pretty solid.
Project, I place money in this thing.
Yes, sir.
What hooks they have on that, because a lot of times, I know, with like the docks and boat ramps, there are certain things you can't do.
What did you say? I didn't know that.
Like our boat ramps and things, we've gotten in arguments with watermen and Queen Anne's County citizens. If this pops their open space, anybody gets it. You cannot use one person or somebody else. So you get people, you know, from out of county or...
This MOU, we had to submit with that to, yes. So they have the copy of the MOU along with, you know, this is what the agreement is. So that is submitted to them.
So can somebody, should somebody outside of Parks and Rec rent our field?
Somebody outside of Parks and Rec, yes, can rent our field. If they meet the requirements of the insurance and all of that, yes, they can.
But it's on, it's on a low priority.
Yeah. It's, I would say it's on a third tier, basically, when you look at it. The priority is...
Parks and Rec is in charge of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So they'd have to come in, you or somebody, and make sure it's opened?
Parks and Rec would handle that. And then...
The scheduling of that.
Yes.
And the monitoring of them.
Yep.
So my last question, I'm not in total disagreement with it, but why are they eliminated from using the announcement booth or the scoreboards? For championship games, they usually do a play caller.
And that's something that we may come back and look at, but I don't...
Don't get it up there.
Yeah. It, what I'm saying is, if we can upgrade our system to do something that's basically handheld or wireless, yes. Right now, everything's hardwired and I...
I could go in and really hit the mask.
Yeah, I'm kind of nervous about that. Um, you have to go into the press box to operate the clock, the PA system, all those things. It's not like a handheld device.
You have to know what you're doing.
So then, yes, we're opening that up. Who's going to certify them? Who's going to, you know, make sure that it's used properly? And we've had this problem with people renting out the auditorium. And that's why we instituted, hey, if you want to use the sound system, you have to pay for a student who runs the sound booth system, you know, to that. I mean, this is all something new that we're just going to have to go through and see how it happens.
And you have the language in here that addendums to this agreement will be made from time to time when it, you know, is necessary. So that would...
But I think that's a good idea, Michelle, because that, that makes it more of a playoff game.
I've been to schools where they do use them and I've been to schools where they don't.
It's a thing different.
It's nice when you can hear what the call is and who may play and, you know, parents love that.
Maybe at some point, we can have somebody run it for them, just charge them and make money.
Well, and that's what, yeah.
That's what the record is.
And that's something...
Make the auditorium.
Just what's going to cost us and, you know...
Yeah.
We've been at the auditorium for years to out, you know, outside sources. And we would come back, being a band, I mean, a drama parent, and the curtains would be sliced. The, you know, we'd have missing equipment.
They didn't monitor it, it wasn't mine.
The PA, the system, and the box upstairs would be, I mean, totally destroyed because people were just in there doing whatever. I mean, we, things were stolen. I mean, so, yes.
This, to me, covers our boxes.
But I don't, but I don't think it should be omitted. I think the target should be in there is, is just like you do, is hire somebody. If they want to use it, then they pay for it.
We could put an addendum to that. I just, at the time...
Because I think that's important. Understand.
Put the brakes on somewhere and then we'll go from there.
Yeah. Because Ken's right.
I mean, even by accident, people are carrying our equipment away.
Well...
And you run it down. You might never get it back.
And that's why we have, now, when somebody rents out our buildings on a Saturday or Sunday, they're required to have a custodian to be there.
Yes.
You know?
Bonita.
That has stopped a lot of our issues that we've had with things being damaged or destroyed. Does it still happen sometimes? Yes. But it's really limited.
I'm talking 10 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Probably 10 years ago.
Um, so, the, one of the items we were talking about were the fees. And I want it to be reimbursed for our lighting. And if you look up there, we have on there about, you know, the timeframe for that. The 50% artificial turf replacement, you have about 10 to 12-year life cycle on that turf. So part of the portions of that fund will go into there. The other part would go into field maintenance, athletic fields at Queen Anne's, Ken Island High School. As you heard me say earlier, those tournament fees that we used to get from, they're no longer as large as they used to be. So, you know, that money will go help to maintain the other fields.
But the rest is general fund, that, I'm sorry, on that topic, general fund. You mean the commissioners' general fund?
No, 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 no.
I don't understand why that 50%...
Certain county commissioners like for the whole entire pot to be turf replacement.
And they talked about it in the last meeting, yeah.
Any money that's generated goes into there. The agreement they signed here has 50% goes in turf replacement, the other 50 goes into maintaining the athletic fields.
Because I thought of one of the original plans, this was meant to put to the schools themselves, they were going to...
I tried that and it...
I mean, isn't that done? I was told that's done in Anarundale, that's done in other counties.
Real small amount of it.
I couldn't tell you that. I will say, instead of the money going directly, okay, so say you've got $100, 50 goes into replacement turf, $50 would go then into Queen Anne's County athletic account. Now it goes into the account to maintain the field. It's still going back to the schools to maintain. I mean, it's just not going into, like, say, the athletic budget to purchase...
Yeah, because we used to have a separate budget on it.
Yeah. So you won't be purchasing jerseys.
Still getting it, though.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And eight to 10 years when the field has to be replaced? Who's paying for that?
That's going to be the county, along with whatever funds we have here.
But the county's going to be responsible for replacing it? And if we have $2,000 or $200,000?
The, what we had talked, discussed and talked about was, the county is fully aware that they have to, county commissioners are replace, have to replace it.
That's what the regular company, that's what they need?
Yep. It doesn't have, it's not going to come out of our account.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. But you're right, there will be a change in leadership and all that. You're right. But yes, there is.
And like, when we're putting the field in, are they taking consideration of tracks around the field, upgrading them or take care, is that enough, I mean, everybody make sure that that's going to work?
So, yes. They started last week at Ken Island High School, I don't know if you noticed, and they are at Queen Anne's County High School. The delay at Queen Anne's County High School was over a permit. There's a lot of, there's a lot of litigation tied into this of, you know, when you start moving soil and dirt and runoff and all that. So getting the notice to proceed. They've put down steel plates, they've put down padding where they're coming across because you're going to take 250 dump truck loads of dirt out and bring in 250. We have, I met with county engineers last week. We had different companies come out to give proposals to resurface the tracks. I will say this, the one good thing about resurfacing the tracks and doing the turf is the drainage system that will have, are, especially at Queen Anne's County High School, you won't have the soccer or the football players standing in, you know, four inches of water every time it rains. You know, same thing down to Ken Island. We walked that track, that track, you know, needs to be resurfaced. We were only able to resurface the start portion about five or six years ago, so...
Explaining the difference between the two tracks and what the plan is. Remember, there's a difference between the track at Ken Island and the track at Queen Anne's.
The track at Ken Island is a, what they call a true, you know, regulation-sized track. The track at Queen Anne's County is a European track. So trying to switch that one from, you know, meters and yards and back and forth, they're working on that now. We met with the companies of how we can lay that out to actually make it more compatible. So it will not, we will not have as many lanes as Ken Island has, just because that's when it was built and there's only so much money. But, you know, resurfacing it and actually trying to lay out the true start-finish in the exchange of, you know, the batons and all that is pretty tricky.
But I thought that was the plan. In the second year, Queen Anne's would be expanded to an eight-lane track and those stands would be moved back to make ADA compliant.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's going to happen money-wise.
So then we could never have a state...
So why? Because in comparison across the eastern shore...
In comparison across the eastern shore, the field width at Queen Anne's County High School falls within regulation of MPSAA. Trying to ask the county commissioners, I mean, this is all based upon upon what kind of money we're going to get from them. We were trying to add those lanes there and move back the bleachers. The cost associated with that is pretty large. They were talking about doing that in year two.
Yep.
I mean, that's...
What's large, larger than what?
So when you go to Ken Island, you'll see there's eight lanes there.
Right. I mean, how much you're covering?
Have to come out two, two additional lanes.
Dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. Captain Kelly is...
Because we're still talking about a disparity.
Yeah, between one and, one and two million.
Million?
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Because you've got to add two tran, two track lanes, you've got to move that whole set of bleachers and the field box back, that fencing. You now have the ADA compliance.
Yeah, but if that's the only way to become ADA compliant, why would we...
If you don't tamper with the stands, you don't have to be. It'll be compliant to when they...
But we would never be able to have a state tournament here because we aren't state regulated.
We can, I went through and dug up the regulations as far as...
Because that came up.
Yes, you're right. The soccer, what the athletic director there was saying wasn't, wasn't totally accurate.
Okay.
So when you go look at the width of the field was the issue, it falls within. And actually, we're, I want to say, if you're looking at the Bayside Conference, Ken Island High School has the largest width.
But the track was an issue, too.
But the track, yes. If we can change it over and get it to the newer version of it.
Right.
Yes, that will work out. But again, these are all items that, you know, I'm kind of at the mercy of...
Well, of course, they cost money. I mean, I get that. But it's almost like right off the bat, we've got disparities here, disparities here between the two schools, between our disabled residents. I know it costs money to be equal, but sometimes that's more important.
I, I get that.
They might have to rally and...
So the state is not going to do anything to make up for the difference in compensation?
This is all county-funded, except for the...
Open space.
Open space, yes.
And the county didn't look at those disparities?
They, they have. They have. And it's...
I would think the commissioners from North County would be concerned.
Well, and that's probably because there was X number of dollars and they had to shift around. I get that. But I'm kind of hoping we can...
And it's not written, that's not written in stone.
A provision in the future to try to get this more equal and equitable for everyone involved.
And it's...
And if it costs money, it costs money. Maybe there's a state grant out there that would address that, that hasn't been looked at. I would like us not to just drop this issue.
No, it's, like I said, it's still on the table, but again, I'm kind of at the mercy of...
I know, I know.
But we get these two turf fields on kind of all of it in Queen Anne's.
Yes, sir.
Are we losing anything?
No. As in, I mean...
Well, I mean, you always want something better. You're putting all this money in to get turf fields. Assuming we're gaining this turf field, people want to play all over their nicer.
Well, I can tell you...
But what do we, we know, I just want to, all of a sudden have this happen and all of a sudden somebody say, well, we lost this or lost that, spending all this money. And we didn't spend another, you say a million dollars? I was, I was thinking more like a hundred thousand, but you're fine. You're fine when you talk to me, I'm all the, like, 10 cents short.
No. What we went through last year, as far as having to move playoff games to our opponent's field because our field was not playable, loss of revenue for the athletic department, also the concession stands.
County lost a lot.
Yeah, we're, we took a pretty big hit last year.
Was that, this passed us, without our fault or Parks and Rec's fault?
It was weather-related.
Weather...
It was a culmination of things.
Somebody else didn't have weather-related?
Yeah, it was a culmination of things.
Culmination of things. Weather, we took a beating on and just...
Let's say the other county still was doing it.
No, you're right. And then just proper maintenance wasn't performed on it.
And that's internal or external from Parks and Rec?
That's...
Well, let's not throw anybody under the bus here. Let's just say it happened.
Well, I know, but it's not what happened again.
No. And that's why...
That's true. That's why it's lit.
I can't change the past. I only can work on the future.
And that's why part of the MOU has in there of getting the money to generate into those fields. And then also, the, the language piece of communication, of, you know, exchanging the information and all that is in there. Because I need the input from both athletic directors of, hey, here's what's going on at the fields, you know, and who's monitoring those fields. I mean, now, like, after last year, I had all of them take pictures. Because everybody talks about it, but then two, three months go by and you forget about how bad it was. So now we have the pictures to document what it looked like, you know, and so we can sit down and talk about that. But I don't see a huge loss for, you know, things. Any other questions?
Any more questions on the MOUs? Thank you, Di. I really appreciate it because we were kind of in the dark of what was going on. We appreciate the input on it. This is in line of where we've talked originally, where we approved it originally, where we wanted to go.
Thank you.
The next item is the handbook. I just want to talk to you all. We, we, I did re, when I reread the whole thing again, and that's when I noticed that it does require a approval at a business meeting. So that's why we're delaying the vote on the business meeting, the approval. But I wanted to make sure we're solid and everybody's got all the changes and understanding of the final draft so that that will go quickly at the business meeting. So that's what we have the time for here, is to talk of any other changes that you may have recommended. I gave one to Jackie, just in editing, I didn't know what was at the bottom of one of the pages. So that was my input. Did anybody have any other? Sharon, you...
Well, I had mentioned, so I don't know, I guess I'll go pull it up, about fixing this vacancy section. You know, there is a law on the books that dictates to us how vacancies will be handled. And that is referenced in this verbiage. But we need, in my opinion, and Darren can weigh in on this, to reference where we got that language from. If it's in the state law, education law, that these two paragraphs are what we follow, we just need to recognize that in here. There would be no confusion in the future like we had this time, if somebody said, as Comar states or as the education law states. There was a law passed in 2014 for this revision. It was never documented in this book where these revisions came from. So I am a little concerned about it saying, the governor shall appoint a new member to fill a vacancy on the county board for the remainder of that term and until a successor is elected. I think that should read or, because based on where they fall in, and I'm going to refer this to Darren anyway, where they fall into fulfilling the footsteps of the person they're replacing depends on... I think that should read "or," because based on where they fall in, and I'm going to refer this to Darren anyway, where they fall into fulfilling the step, footsteps of the person they're replacing depends on.
Time frame.
The election for the next year. Mr. Smith will run in an election next year, based on the new law.
Okay, so you want to blur in there that has to accept.
So I want to include the law, I just want that recognized in our handbook.
You help us with that.
And what we need to take out and what's not important, so there's not confusing verbiage.
I, I think putting the verbiage in to reflect whatever is currently the law, so that your handbook is up to date, is the right way to go. I'm always hesitant to suggest in a handbook that there are actually these sites to statutes or Comar provisions, because those change. They get recotified, they, they get tweaked, they get a point one added, and then you next, you know, you've got to, you've got to change your handbook. I would rather it be that, if I recommend that we're doing anything, is that if you have a handbook committee, or anybody who simply wants to take the task on, is periodically, look at your handbook, and if you see some change that you catch, maybe before I do even, that a law has changed, or you've been following legislation that requires a change, then that's the time to revisit your handbook and make that correction. But I, but I think for this one, since we know the statute has certain language, I would recommend you just include the language in here.
And for the first two paragraphs, I think the first paragraph could actually go away, and the second paragraph is very well-defined. "In the case of a vacancy on a county board, on our county board, the governor shall appoint a qualified person to serve on the county board until a successor is elected and qualified." And that's all based on when they stepped into the position, based on who they're replacing. If it's in the second year, the verbiage is here for that. If it's in the first year, it's in there. And that was all predicated on House Bill 1033 that changed in 2014.
Yeah.
I understand why it said elected and qualified.
Well, that's why I think we should take out that first paragraph.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, why don't we have a qualified successor, successor is elected? Because aren't they qualified before they're elected or appointed?
Well, and actually, qualified should probably precede elected anyway.
That's exactly what I'm putting in.
Qualifies and elected, yeah.
A qualified successor.
Well, they mentioned a qualified person appointed, so that means they, we could do without that last qualified word. You're right, yes, yes.
I'm just saying, you can't be a successor unless you qualify.
Because that's already predicated early in the, in the process, yeah.
I just thought that that word was.
I would take that last qualifies out, leave that second paragraph as it is, and get rid of paragraph number one. We've got the verbiage from the law in the third and fourth.
Do you agree they had to qualify before they can be elected anyway?
Yeah.
So why is this?
What page is it on?
It's on page 21.
21.
The old handbook, of the old handbook, I don't know where it is in the noise.
Because 16 reads, "If the vacancy occurs before the filing deadline for candidates for the primary election that is held in the second year of the term."
Yes.
"The individual appointed shall serve until a successor is elected at the next general election and qualifies." That's on page 16.
Those two paragraphs are what we need to attach the law to.
Well, that, just so you know, that's, that's simply a sort of modified version of, the law is what you should put in here. The law has the word qualifies.
Okay, okay.
So, my recommendation simply be, Captain Kelly, is that I just send to you.
How it should be written.
This sub-paragraph pulled from the statute, and that's what you include in your book.
And there's two. The second part is the other, it's not just that third paragraph, well, I'm on page 21, y'all are on page 16. There's two paragraphs that need to be, that come out of that law statement. Both of those need to be incorporated. I think what we had in our original book, the first paragraph can go away, I mean, can, yeah, go away altogether, the second one can stay and take out that last.
So, Darren, if you, if you could.
But just write it up the way it matches that.
And I would copy everybody on it.
Okay.
Because everyone can look at it, and then we're, if we're okay with it, we'll put it in there and we can approve it.
And then the.
For the public, for the record, it's, it's Section 3-10, capital A, dash, 01 of the Education Article, the Maryland Code.
And I apologize for not having the draft up. So, I also mentioned that we had kind of written the policy on, policy development, based on the handbook verbiage as well. So, under policy development in our new revision.
Where's that on?
Yeah, where, what does that say? I need to get this attachment up here, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Okay, go ahead.
I've still got MOUs up here.
Yeah, pull it up.
Let me get there.
We'll wait.
Because this paragraph under policy development is how we worded the policy itself, so we need to make sure that stays the same for both, here's the policy, so we can make sure the book matches that. That was the only other thing I had.
Is it page seven?
Let's look.
Page 16. Policy Development, page eight?
The new, no. It was 14 in the old book, let me bring it up.
So your most current version is, Policy Development starts on page eight.
Okay, let me get there, sorry.
There it is.
So Ms. Harlow, are you saying, I'm looking for the, here we go, I'm getting the attachment, I'm sorry, I didn't have the handbook up, the draft. And what page, eight, eight? Great. Yes, it is the intent of the Board of Education, under policy development, that needs to be the same as our statement is in our policy development policy. That's where we got this statement, was from here, so we just need to make sure they match.
Is it?
Uh, Board of Education, Queen Anne's County, the Board, to put policies, serve guidelines. Yeah, it looks like it is, functioning in accordance with the courts, mission statement, mm-hmm. Oh, I would suggest we do the same in the handbook that we do on the policy. I will leave the mission statement, when you pull this document up, is a link, and you can go straight to the Queen Anne's County mission statement from the policy. We should do that from the handbook as well. Make mission statement a live link to our current mission statement, so people can go and read that, if they choose. Or develops this policy. Yes, that says exactly what our policy development says, perfect.
Good, so what is the change you want to make?
Uh, just make mission statement a live link, so when they click on it, it takes us to our actual mission statement.
Okay, Jackie, you'll do that.
Which I think has not changed since we started working on them.
Right, it hasn't, I'll get that on.
Those were my two things.
Okay, great. Any other recommended changes to the handbook? We'll feel excited if we can get this approved and taking that.
Again, I want to bring this up, just so we're on the same page, is about the Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month meeting.
Page.
I'm looking, I apologize, I just saw it in here.
The time is no longer in there.
The time is no longer there, that we, we are making it as.
Flexibility, based on the board.
Flexibility for our members.
Just make sure we give the public plenty of notice of the time.
And that, I think, should be reflected in.
Should be announced at the regular meeting.
We always, just like we do regular meetings, yeah, it's not going to change.
Well, but we're not being held to a time like we were for the last five, you know, four years.
And that's why we need to make sure we get an announcement out about what that particular Wednesday meeting time is. Be it at night, be it during the day, make sure we announce it in our work sessions, I mean, our regular business meeting, and we get it on our website in a timely manner.
Okay, so you have, business meetings are held as specified below, unless notice to the contrary is given in a previous business meeting. First Wednesday of each month, the third Wednesday of each month for a work session as needed.
Twenty-four.
Right.
And maybe under that, put a bullet, times to be announced.
At.
Just another bullet, fourth bullet, times to be announced.
But it also says here, that if, if special meetings arise, we let everybody know.
Right.
Within 24 hours.
Well, that's us, our group.
Okay, I see.
Not the public. I mean, it'd be nice to give the.
No, we do, we do give them, if we have a special meeting.
Right.
We let them know it's a business meeting.
Because I believe the old manual, it was 72 hours for board notification, but I could be wrong, or 48.
Just make sure that we're all okay with that.
Yeah, I would, I would just add something about times to be announced, because they're going to vary.
Can do that.
Every month, every effort is made to schedule items, okay, now that's not about.
Yeah, maybe under even the first one, our first Wednesday of each month.
That's, that's a standard.
That's a standard. We could actually put our time in there, but that's a standard. The third Wednesday, an asterisk, times to be announced. And then under the next paragraph with three bullets, another asterisk, times to be announced. Covers them both, covers them all.
We can do that.
Because there have been times where we've had to, I believe, one time, move a regular, well, we move regular business meetings based on holidays. July's the perfect example.
Sure.
So it's not going to be the first Wednesday, but appropriately so. It's due post-announced.
What's the state law say, how much notice do we have to, for us to meet, let's say, we want to meet next week or tomorrow, how much notice do we have to give the public?
It's as soon as possible, within 48 hours, that's preferable, but it's as soon as, as soon as possible.
If we have an emergency meeting and we only have 24 hours, they're only going to get 24 hours, too.
Right, exactly.
And, and it's emergency, and that's why you have that flexibility.
The only reason we're bringing this up is, was for the last, since 2015 when we changed this book, we were tied to an 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. meeting on this third Wednesday of the month, and that was not, it's not always, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
New members can't always do that. So by opening this up, it allows us a lot of extra time to.
This is flexible, which we need.
Which, yeah, we needed the flexibility.
Right.
Thank you.
So, Dick, as far in advance for the OMA Act as can be, but if we have an emergency arise, and even us only have 24-hour notice, we give the public 24-hour notice, but we just have to file. We've been smacked for that. We've been smacked in this county for not publicizing meetings properly, so, yeah. We want to make sure we do it right, that's why.
Sure, what was the fourth bullet?
Um, just times to be announced.
Times to be announced.
It's up there, and they figure it out.
Or an asterisk under both sections, and not even another bullet, just put times to be announced, it's an asterisk to each segment, the two paragraphs, because that's going to be predicated on the group, the time of year, whatever.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for input.
Perfect on the policy part, thank you.
Okay, next item is future meetings and events, school board meeting, July 10. The 17th is a work session, that is our, let's see, that will be, we have it scheduled to be the 11 to 2, but we can change the time on that if you want, once we get the.
Approve it.
Approve it, we approve it at the July 10th meeting.
Okay.
And what's the 24th scheduled time?
The 24th was our meeting to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Did we have time for that yet?
And just a reminder to everybody, the June 26th is to provide your information, your recommended evaluation for the superintendent to Jackie by the 26th of June.
Don't, we have to go back and look on the Capitol, the action item.
Oh, thank you, miss that one, all right.
And I know you had it checked in your paper, so you, you had it.
Okay, let me do that, go ahead, what, Tammy? We'll finish the meeting.
Yeah, let's finish on this, the future meetings.
Correct.
The school board work session on July 24th, that is not the third Wednesday, it's the last one of the month, so can we?
Correct.
Can we just say 5:00 p.m.?
We can, and I think I have that on my message to you all.
And is that just an executive team, is that just, just the board meeting?
Yes.
There's no, the exec team doesn't need to be here.
Confirming it now, right.
Okay.
And that's for the evaluation.
Be dedicated to that.
July 24th, 5:00 p.m., and that is just board members.
For the evaluation?
Yes. The board members and Darren?
What was July 24th?
And then the 31st is with the super.
Yeah.
What time do we have for that one? Or do we?
Right, right, right. We did not have the 24th originally in there.
It was tentative.
It was tentative, okay. We'll talk about that at the next closed session.
Our work session's the 17th, right?
Yes.
That's going to be 11 to 2.
Right.
Unless we change this.
Understood, right now.
Right now, 11 to 2. That's why, I think that's why I put that in there.
I'll explain that to you when I have the executive process.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Okay, and I skipped one, I forget, I skipped current action 3.01, capital budget. We need to motion to approve the capital budget as presented earlier in this meeting.
So moved, second.
I have a motion, second, to approve capital budget as presented in the meeting, Mrs. Wright.
Board members, please respond when I call your name. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Musset?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have five in the affirmative, motion carries, thank you.
And so I need a motion to move into closed session, and then we'll, we will be finished at the end of the closed session.
Give that to Ms. Harper.
There you go. Cam, here you go. Oh, I have, okay, thank you. Pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County will meet in closed session to protect the privacy or reputation of individuals concerning a matter not related to public business, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, to consult with counsel, to discuss an administrative item, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials of whom this body has jurisdiction, or any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a motion, second, to move into closed session for the items mentioned just now by Ms. Harper and Mrs. Wright.
Board members, again, please respond when I call your name. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Musset?